What's up?
All set.
All right, uh, let's call this meeting of the June twenty eighth, twenty twenty one Rollins Street Select Board to order. Due to an air conditioning outage, I'm gonna try to keep this meeting as brief as possible. It's not that bad in here right now, but...
It will be.
It will be. At least people know that. So we're gonna do some juggling of the agenda. We have non-publics. I think it makes sense to do those at the end.
Okay.
Take care of everything else and invite everyone to leave. So I'm sorry for folks that showed up for non-public, but I really don't think this will take long. I don't think we have elections for the board of officers. Community input, I will invite community input, but I will ask you to keep it brief.
Hi, Lorraine Hanson, eleven Watson Lane. The only thing I want to let you know is I sent a letter. I was reviewing the old minutes again, because I read them all the time, and then I was reviewing them again. And I noted that in one of the minutes, one of our select board members was participating in discussions regarding the compensation of his wife. And I was concerned about that, because I think that if you look at most of the information that we've got from NHMA, which I usually ask to get anyway, they seem to indicate that when someone has a possible pecuniary interest, they should not be involved in any discussion or vote or debate regarding a spouse, well, regarding someone else. And in this case, a spouse would obviously be it. I certainly am not trying to cast any blame, because I think everybody's got the right ideas, and they all work in the right direction on this board. But I just wanted to mention that, because I think in the future, we want to make sure that doesn't happen. I don't think anybody ever gave it any thought. I certainly wouldn't have had it, you know, at the time. But when I reread, I realized there was an anomaly. So I'm hoping that as you all go forward, that that won't happen again, because it's especially a problem, because if you read the materials I sent from NHMA, which I did include with my letter, in some instances, it may even void a vote, and we don't want to have that happen. So we gotta be really careful about it. So that's all I have to say, and I thank you all for everything you do.
I'd like to just comment for a second. I read your email, and thanks for bringing to attention. And also, thank you for bringing to attention, and I'm glad that citizens can point out the dedication about town employees, especially the ones that have been here for a while.
Yes, absolutely.
Because I know they have their habit into it, and during COVID, it was a little difficult for them, so I'm glad to put in their dedication, so thank you.
Absolutely, I agree. Very dedicated.
Yeah, and I couldn't agree more, Lorraine, that we need to do our best to avoid even the appearance of a conflict of interest. You know, last year was a crazy year with everything going on, so...
Absolutely. I don't know how you all survived today, as far as I'm concerned.
Anyone else for community input? Mr. Hill? I'm not working out. Okay, let's tackle the things that we need to get done tonight. So we have some board and committee appointments that we have to make, because there are meetings coming up. I don't have that...
I'm sorry, I intended to put that on the agenda, and I did not. So there are two appointments. One is for an ex officio member of the planning board, because there's a meeting Tuesday night next week. And then also for the Highway Safety Committee, Mike Gillis has graciously agreed to be reappointed. There are, I do just want to mention that there are no other public, members of the public expressing interest in any of the board committee opportunities, so that's problematic. But for tonight, if we could handle Planning Board and the Highway Safety, that would be helpful.
So I know that you had expressed an interest, I didn't know...
Highway Safety.
Highway Safety.
I did commit to that.
Okay, what about planning?
The planning board, I did not commit to. So you're acting as ex officio now?
I have been, and I am now, but the term is up, so it happens, that's the next meeting after the election. So we need to redo appointments. Some things I can stand in for the board, that's one of them, not every appointment. But I know you expressed interest in it. So I sent you some training materials. I don't know if that was helpful to give you an idea about what they do, but it's certainly for you to have if, you know, as a board member, you know, the board gets to choose those appointments. So if you're interested, that's certainly for you to want to do, you know?
I am interested, but I was kind of hoping to kind of get a little bit more familiar with the select board administration administration part first. So do you need to make that call now?
We need to make the appointment now, but it doesn't mean that we can't reconsider the appointment, you know, in the future. The other thing is, the appointments always expire at town meeting, so, you know, that's only nine months, that's nine meetings. And so, you know, then you're doing them again, or if you're feeling a sense of readiness and want to readdress it, then we can put it on the agenda and do that.
Okay. Because I would like to do it, I just feel like I have a lot to understand right now, so I don't know if you can continue that temporarily, maybe?
I would be happy to, until whatever it is the board wants to reconsider it, and you're ready.
I could say, I think, you know, probably in a, I think I get a couple of ones, I'll probably have a good feel for everything, if the board wants to reconsider that.
I think that's perfectly viable, yeah.
Yeah.
I would appreciate it.
Do we need a motion for that, or we can just...
I think consensus is fine.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
So Caroline, we can use our ex officio on planning, and if someone could make a motion to appoint Mike Gillis to Highway Safety.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mike Gillis, I would check.
Okay. Okay, a second?
Second?
On favor? Aye. All right. Mike Gillis is reappointed. With the pay increases, I think there's these spreadsheets. Maybe you can help me understand this?
Sure. So...
Would I pass them?
Yes, I did email them to you in advance, so that they wouldn't be completely foreign to you. This is something that we do every year, as soon as we can, right after town meeting, assuming any kind of percentage increase, salary increases were budgeted in the approved budget. So now that we have an approved budget, like anything else, just because it's budgeted doesn't mean the board has to be to do it. But these spreadsheets outline every employee's current rate of pay, and whether or not in that given position, they would be entitled to the budgeted one percent increase, or whether or not they otherwise receive an increase. So what their new rate, if it's different, what that would be, as well as the calculated retro pay, making it retroactive to January based on hours or number of pay periods worked. There's three spreadsheets there, because they're divided by those people who report, the police chief, those that work for highway and transfer stations, so that the supervisors can sign off on them. And then the one that I approved, which has mine direct reports, and his ladies.
I'd like a moment to close over, and then we can move to accept those as presented, or if there's discussion.
I did review these, and the only couple had those, so forty, or twenty twenty rate and twenty twenty one rate. Is that for a specific period of time, like since the town meeting approval till today?
It's really misleading, because really what it means is their current rate, and that would have been the better way to say it, is the current rate, and then the proposed increase.
So the hourly is easy to understand, it's the salary that's a little...
So the salary is, if you take somebody's annual rate, and you divide it by twenty-six pay periods in a year, we've worked twelve pay periods so far this year, that's what the twelve represents. So it's taking the difference in their salary from before and after and multiplying that , I told you.
Okay, all right. So it's a pay period, correct?
Okay. Is there a motion to accept these as presented?
Motion to accept the salary increases as accepted.
Wait, 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 sorry. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so those are all set. Okay, Juneteenth, so this was a, this was a gift from the federal government. Unfortunately caused a lot of confusion among our employees and select board, because it happened the day before the holiday. I feel like, so I know some people worked, some people didn't work. At this point, I feel like it's easiest, okay, so I guess there are two things. Is there support to include this on the holiday calendar going forward? And how do we handle this for twenty twenty-one? For this year, I would propose anyone that didn't take it off, get a floating holiday, since some people did take it off, and will presumably repay. That is complicated by transfer station employees, because they don't really get days off, so I think we'd have to give them extra money, four hours or five hours, that they would be entitled to. So thoughts from the board?
I'm gonna go first. So I did reach out to some of the other communities, and because it is a state approved holiday, they did not tolerate. And they also raised concerns about the fact that it wasn't on the approved holiday calendar. And there are also some issues around collective bargaining agreements, and so for that reason, with such short notice, and not having it on an approved calendar, they did not tolerate. So I feel we certainly need to put it on the calendar going forward. Do we know who, well, do we have a holiday calendar?
We do, it's part of the personnel policy, which holidays are observed by the town, and then it is part of a policy that the town administrator creates a holiday calendar for the upcoming year at the end of the prior year, so that we know when is the transfer station going to be closed, and when is the town holiday going to be closed, which is approved by the board.
And it's every federal holiday that is on that. I mean, there are...
There are ten holidays, yes.
And I agree with you, we should include it going forward. And I think you were about to ask to be known.
Do we know who took it for themselves to take the day off, and who worked? Do we know that?
At least one person, I believe, did, but I don't know outside of that.
I guess my issue is that it wasn't a select board approved holiday, so my thought is that for those who took it off without approval, we should consider allowing them to use their PTO. And then going forward, make sure if we're going to have it on the holiday schedule. And I think it's important for the board to exercise its authority in those cases as well, because I just don't feel like it should be a big role.
Right. Yeah, Paul? Any thoughts?
It's kind of just a, going forward, I agree.
Yes, okay, I think we're all in agreement.
The best, it's a hard decision. I mean, I threw my two cents out there, there was a night, which I shouldn't have.
It's okay, I think you were trying to do the right thing.
So I guess I'm agreeing with that. PTO time, I guess, when people have used it, and then going forward, it should be on the calendar for twenty twenty-two.
Okay. So I think, I think we're all in agreement there, that going forward, it'll be on the holiday calendar. This time around, six hours to react to, if a newly enacted holiday really wasn't enough time to, for us to react. So why don't we, why don't we at least get a motion to get it on the holiday calendar? Because that's amending the personal policy, right?
Yes, so I'll put that in my draft, yes.
All right, I'll make a motion to add Juneteenth to the holiday calendar. All right? The only, okay.
Yeah.
The only thing that I think we should probably follow, the federal mandates, like when it falls on one day and stuff, obviously.
Yeah.
That became confusing, because, which is why it's the policy the way it is, which is that if it's on the weekend, it's celebrated on the Monday, which is also confusing, because when the banks are closed, the post offices are closed on Friday, it doesn't make sense that we're closed on Monday, it's not consistent for the public. So I agree with you, but, and I think that we can, we can cover that problem or that inconsistency by, by the approval in December of the holiday calendar for the next year, and telling people ahead of time. The reason that language was added is because people decided for themselves to take Friday off or Monday off, based on whether it was a Saturday or Sunday, what they felt was best, and then there were inconsistencies, and there was not an advanced conversation, you know, a conversation in advance of the holiday. So we got caught a couple times with people taking different days off for that. So, but like I said, I think, I think that's a really good point. I think we've covered that now with the calendar approval in December, so I'll make that revision as well.
Okay. I have a motion in a second. Any more discussion on Juneteenth? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
So those are the things we needed to cover. George, do you have, you have items for us?
I think I've one.
Okay, one show.
Actually, we gave them to a PO from Valmont for the storm drain cleaning, where we took the matten and stuff, it went over about fifteen hundred dollars.
Okay.
And we're gonna take that of a stormwater, so I don't know if you want to send a PO for that, or you can just...
I think you can revise the purchase order, it was approved, the project was approved, it just got over expended, not really being able to pursue how much time it was gonna take to GIS the storm drains.
Okay.
So the overage could, so I think we can amend the PO, but I think the question for the board is, or maybe a bit of awareness, I would suggest that we take the fifteen hundred dollars out of the stormwater line, and executive, because he will, I think, fully expended
Oh, yes.
the catch base, meaning line.
Okay.
But George and I will discuss the opportunity about whether or not we might possibly be able to take it out of the asset management loan program for stormwater, yes, of course, that would be the best scenario, but not at the expense of something else.
I didn't bring one white box, but I have a yellow box.
Okay, I think that's okay.
I'll just add that line.
So if you just move to amend the PO, whatever it says, and then you go out?
By another fifteen hundred dollars, is that right?
It was thirty-five hundred in PO to forty-nine, twelve fifty.
Forty.
So I'm going to modify the sort of one nine seven seven, and increase it by one thousand four hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents, for a total of four thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents.
All right, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Anything else?
I have some payment calls, I didn't know if you were wanting to hold up.
If you wanna, if you wanna...
I did not do PO time, I might...
Okay, yeah, if you wanna just tell us briefly.
We had seven thousand dollars left in the sidewalk fund from last year. I got a quarter of six thousand dollars from KC paving to finish the sidewalks down to Main Street, down Main Street, up down through front. And they're overlaying what we have, the sidewalks, leveling them all up. I didn't know if you wanted to go with that, or...
What's left, unless I work for them?
It was seven thousand, I'm coming to this, Pope Man at six. And that was the money we had pooled last year to the sidewalks.
Yep.
So I didn't know what you wanted, if you wanted to hold up.
I don't know, I think we can probably ponder that.
I have a question with them, so are we not anticipating any other work, like, there are work that we need to have there?
There should be sidewalks.
Right, right.
Yeah, on sidewalks.
There's other sidewalks. And I'm worried right now. This is, we were trying to get public with Main Street last year, we didn't get it finalized at the end of the year, so we didn't have that. So yeah, if you want, it doesn't matter just now, I just try to get...
Yeah, why don't we, next, next time we meet, just in the interest of time? And, oh, you got the whole panel there, okay.
All right, there are three different folks from KC, the different project, the project here, out front, for seventeen eight. I think it was Ohio last year, but we decided that part, if we don't have, we're gonna cut out just the, the dad's watching overlay.
Talking about...
Right, right, right. That's, you know, that would be the, you know, the overlay, the sidewalks, pretty good. Then there was a question about Hall Road earlier in the year, when you feed the road to finish that road along with the doorway section that we overdid here last year, but they gave us a quarter sixty-eight hundred to Hall Road, so. And that would, and that road would be, it's good as well. Yeah, totally.
Okay, and that's an overlay, obviously. That's an overlay.
Yeah, that would just be an overlay to finish that road.
I'm sorry, George, can you go over those numbers again, for the town boards?
Okay, the sidewalks was six thousand, resurfaced the sidewalks going down through Front Street from here. And then in front of the town hall, remove the asphalt in the front section of the building and overlay, base it in and overlay with an inch and a half over the top of the whole entire thing, I believe, the tour space in the seventeen eight.
Okay.
You bet Hall Road.
I don't get Hall Road, sorry.
Sixty-eight hundred?
Sixty, so, six thousand, you have those?
Correct. That would just probably have that one.
Okay. Okay, so next time, why don't...
I did POs, we've done up to that, but next time, if you want to do...
Yeah, I think that, that makes sense to me. We have the information, we can take a ride around town. I haven't been on Hall Road in probably thirteen years, since my grandfather died on Hall Road.
I went for a ride with, that's, I saw the roads, it's a couple of those I didn't even know existed.
I know.
I lived in the whole life.
Yeah, Gilman and Hall is down behind, hopefully, out, so you have to go to go to get them.
Yeah, those ones, I was like, this is mine, this one.
And that would be, if you're gonna go up like that road, take a ride around Calhoun Drive also.
Yeah, what's the, what's the status of that? I, we got an email not that long ago from someone, reading...
Someone's, it's not on someone's schedule this year, so...
It doesn't make sense to them.
Problem is, there's us, near us.
Yep.
So we're gonna have to keep it on a rate, I'm gonna try to continue to talk with them and see if they plan on doing it next year.
Okay.
Probably move something around, move something around, but that road isn't very rushed here, I mean, Hall Road, other than that section we prepared last year.
I was kind of thinking about the way we put the road, turn it on the strategy.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Yep. I'll share that document, I don't think I shared it with the two of you on the drive, so that as things pop in your head, you can just put it on there and start ranking this stuff, but we do need to evaluate the whole, the whole program. Okay. Did you want to go into non-public?
I do.
Okay. Yeah, if you want to hang out for a sec?
I don't think it'll be too long.
Yeah, I don't think it'll be too long. That will mean that we'll need a vote after non-public. Just thinking through my head, like, Board of Operations, but if people want to stick around for that, they can, but we'll, we'll need to go back into public too. So yeah, if, John, do you have POs and stuff, or just...
Nope, I just have the interdiction.
Okay.
Just Barry here.
Awesome. Okay, so...
Is that on public too?
That will be in non-public.
Obviously.
I didn't actually read them yet, so...
I didn't, I'm sorry.
Can push it up?
I did, actually, I only have one comment.
Oh, okay, if you have a comment, then...
Just a comment about dental being on the next project, I didn't, I haven't taken that.
My, my idea at the time was that we'll reconsider it for the twenty twenty-two budget. You know, see if it works in that budget, it didn't work that well in the twenty-one's budget, but...
Table, but you were discussing that shit, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Will that be part of the strategy, discussion as well?
I think it should, I mean, I think we need to talk about benefits, and...
Yeah, you know, I'm just gonna bring this up, because it sounds crazy, we gotta, we gotta think, you know, budget and everything already for that shit.
No, I know.
Before you know it, gone.
Yeah? It's crazy. So we've been tabled minutes, the one, the one thing, I guess, the redistricting letters, which, I think, are somewhere. If, if the board is okay with me, it's just one, no?
It's one to, I think, six different people.
Oh, okay, I see. If I can get consensus, that the board's okay with me signing these, it was on the warrant, and we don't, so I can sign those?
Yes.
There's another, the Department of Revenue Administration, this, this is the thing that takes place at the inventory forms?
This is the PA twenty-eight, which is, it's about, the Department of Revenue Administration is asking Rollins Park whether or not you want to issue the inventory forms that we used to do until a few years ago, a form that went out and asked you who lives in your home, and if you need any changes to your property. We discontinued that maybe about three years ago, because the data that we collected wasn't, didn't seem to be of any value, whereas there was, it was an administrative lift, it annoyed the residents that they got a fee if it was not returned on time, and then also, we are required to keep them in perpetuity. Seriously. But the town has the option of, you know, while you did vote at that time to discontinue them, at any time, you can do them again, and there are communities that do it once, three, five years, or whatever they want to.
Yep. So the decision here is, will we or, or won't we be sending up those inventory forms? And we don't have to address this tonight, if you guys want to.
Yeah, I'm kind of...
I'd like to make a motion that we continue to discontinue.
Second?
Yeah, second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So I need your help, Caroline, will not, right?
Correct, thank you.
Will not, okay. I think, and the one other thing that we could address is the portico. I don't know if you guys have a chance to look at...
I had some time, and we can break in.
Okay, we can tuck that back in the folder.
Maybe we could take a field trip when you get out of non-public, and then come back?
Yes, that's a good idea. Okay, at this point, if I can get a motion to go into non-public session, we will, we're gonna do two separate sessions, but it's all under personnel side of the board.
All we can vote motion, go into ninety-one eight, or personnel.
So we do a roll call vote, Paul?
Yes.
Kim? And then also the guests, we're in non-public session. Why don't we handle you first, George, and then, and then I'll take care of the planning? Yeah, they... Fire everything?
I thought, yeah.
Very clever, yeah.
Um, we're just gonna step off real quick, we'll be, we'll be back.
Wait one minute.
Yeah, they had, they're gonna, they're gonna do the cupola first, they're gonna look at it. Yeah, they're gonna go look at it.
I know. That's been how many years they've been looking at?
The, the cupola out front. The portico.
Wait, they're gonna, it's gonna be on the ground.
It will be, it'll be like that house in Florida.
They had, they had a good deal years ago.
To find out, to be told to that door.
They had a good deal years ago for.
It's already collapsed, I'm interested to see what comes out of that.
Oh.
Um, what are you trying to do?
I'm trying to get this camera off so I can change this. And there's that little thing, where is it? Oh, right here, look at my color.
I don't think that it's gonna be that long. No, I know it's not, and I'm sure, because we haven't even been an hour yet.
But I just.
We aren't even close to an hour because it was shut off.
I'm trying to learn to change batteries, we'd string last time, it ran out.
See, no, mine, mine won't plug any, anymore either. And I brought it to a computer place to try to get it fixed.
Yeah.
And he couldn't find the U S B micro port that's needed for changing it. That's what it is, it's, it's the U S B port on the side of the camera that has gotten bent or something.
Right, yes.
And for my camera, he couldn't find any U S B ports.
I opened that back door to let Katie out and it's like, punched it right in the face.
Yeah.
Do you like her?
I do.
Yeah, she's awesome.
Yes, she's gonna be a good asset.
Yeah, and I'm telling you, she knows all the tricks of this, comes software we already run, and she was telling me about the different things she can do, and I was going, I didn't even know software does this.
And you know a lot.
Yeah, I mean, I've been using it for twenty-one years, but.
So I said cold up there.
You guys just have a bunch of hot air in here.
Okay, um, from our non-public session.
You guys stop.
Um. I would entertain, um, a motion.
Sorry, did you give the camera?
I, you didn't open it.
You didn't start it.
I believe it's recording.
It's recording.
Okay, I didn't see a light blinking.
I got a little.
Oh, okay, that's right too, it's on the same side as mine.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for, uh, one of the highway department employees to, um, to pay it up eighteen dollars an hour. Just for, for the services involved, uh, from C D L.
Okay, so salary adjustment for to eighteen.
Second.
Uh, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, and then, uh, we, we met with a, a candidate for the admin assistant role, um, with the police department, that's Katie Perry. Um, and if there's a motion to extend an offer to her.
Make a motion to extend an offer to Katie Perry?
Um.
As administrative assistant in the police department.
Okay.
With a pay rate of.
Pay rate of eighteen dollars an hour?
Yep, okay. Thank you.
Second.
Second, uh, any further discussion on, on that? Okay, hearing none, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, excellent, um.
Carolyn, is that Katie with the I E or?
Yes. Um, so the last bit be, before we get to other business, um, is the portico, which we just visited. Um, so there's a P O to do the structural repair with a coat of paint for eight thousand dollars, or, um, for twelve thousand dollars, they would strip down to bare wood. Um, and, and do the lead removal and the structural repair, so eight thousand versus twelve thousand, um, what's, what are your feelings?
I feel we definitely need to do the structural repair. Um, are you really concerned about the plumbing that's scraping, um, if there's rotten wood, are we going to have to make a new repair of that?
That's a really good question, um, I suppose there's always. But the other need, if you have the primary cleaning operation underneath, and so, while you could have rot anywhere, you know, my guess is that it's protected by the roof. And so that's less likely to happen, it doesn't look like there's water damage there, um, but there's, I think, um, since there's gonna be scraping of the old paint anyway, I think there's the potential of something being found and brought to you, regardless of which way you go forward. I, I don't think that's likely, no.
Is, um, is this, so this company, they are doing both the structural, the, um, and the painting?
And the lead removal if you choose for that extra level.
Right now, I'm gonna see what you guys weigh, right now, I, I just, I'm weighing towards the eight thousand myself, because I think we'll get it fixed. And it's painted, we're looking at, you know, perfect, but it's still look nice.
Right.
And, you know, looking up the roof, you might see some of the old paint, but other than that, I mean.
Yep.
That's my initial thought, definitely I agree that we should do structural, I don't like the colors.
I'm, I'm on board with that too, um. Okay, so I'm gonna move P O, uh, twenty-ten to Razi Builders, uh, for eight thousand dollars for repair of the town hall portico with paint.
Yeah, that was second thought.
Sir, um, any further discussion? Um, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So I don't know how you want me to do this, just.
Um, just scratch out whatever you're not doing, and then if you could total it, the new total.
I'm, I'm sorry, thank you, and so they're going to basically rework some of the bricks as well.
As, the quote says, as needed for structural, not like to make it perfectly beautiful, but what's required, you can see sort of near the columns, there are some, there's some cracks, some edges. Um, those are structural issues, those need adjusting.
Just one, and one last main silly question, but the only thing I'd ask is, when you get back to these people, that the quote still stands.
Yeah, I have a lot of.
Crossing trails across so much, but they may say, oh, now it's.
Nine thousand five hundred. Right.
Um, one other thing we need to consider is access to the building, will it be repaired?
That, that's, um, yes, so people will, I'm not sure how you operate signage, but, um, and I'm hoping it won't take too long. Um, and we are completely closed on Wednesdays, so that, that part, I think, if, if that can be arranged in that way, at least minimizes, uh, because then we're not open until Thursday morning, so that gives a good.
I'd be very surprised if they're gonna do that today.
And not, not that they would, but that, that it's, it's a, it's a larger block of time that's not interrupted, you know?
I mean, I'm imagining we'll have to.
Sorry.
Just get out.
Absolutely.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, and it's gonna go on for a while, yes.
So is this act, the entryway available?
Absolutely, and it'll be open, and it's a hidden hub entrance anyway, so people aren't really very aware of it, so to answer your question, somehow we're gonna have to figure out signage to direct people to use the other entrance, but it'll remain.
It'd be like a soft horse with an arrow.
Yeah.
Probably.
Yeah.
Probably do it.
Okay, awesome, so that has been lingering over us for years and years, um, thank you for approving, um, so the, the only. I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip down to, um, other business before the session, or.
Well, um, uh, so just one question, um, could we, in the next meeting, have the chief, um, can, could we have confirmation on that receipt, the best I received?
Oh, it's, he's already been, he's already, um, he, um, she's referring to the credit card statement, all this, all the credit card purchases are supposed to have receipts with them, um, they have. They're supposed to hand them in within a week, sometimes that's not possible, um, so, we know that there are a couple of receipts missing, um, and there's one that's vague, so those needs to get corrected. He's, he says he has them and he'll bring them in, so yes, I will, um, leave that bill in the folder for you to see next week, um.
Okay, thank you, um, so for other business, um, I just have. I did not see, but I'm sure I must have missed it, the notice go out for the meeting tonight, on, on the website?
Um, it doesn't, so there wasn't, there wasn't, there wasn't notice, um, because this is, I think this is the first meeting where they changed meeting times, so, so that notice did go out, but just as a point of information. If, um, when, it, it's kind of crazy because the board has a regular schedule and then the regular schedule changes, uh, and that creates confusion, but when, when a board or committee has a regular standing meeting time, you can post that, you know, this is the standard regular meeting time of, of that board. So it doesn't necessarily require additional notification, which doesn't mean it's not a good idea.
Okay.
Um, but yes, and, and, and these, they do get, they do get posted, um, even though the board tends to meet pretty regularly, so at this point, um, the process is that Chuck, um, at least once a month, um, puts out a, these are the upcoming meetings. Um, but, but that's typically way more than monthly because then new meetings get created, so then there are these updates that say, these are the meetings for the upcoming weeks.
So, um, one of the things I think would be nice is if, um, the week four, our meeting, um, we, the town mayor did send out, um, a meeting news, and it threw, um, a link to a virtual agenda, so people would know what we're going to be discussing.
We don't have, like, the, I mean, we could have the working agenda, but it wouldn't be the complete agenda.
Well, if you did a Google share, I know, because they're Googles.
No, I'm saying the agenda doesn't get set that far ahead.
No, it's like the, the agenda is always, you know.
Like last minute.
Very last minute, so, um, but it is publicly available, that doesn't make it obvious on the website, so that part we can, we can, um.
Because I think, you know, um, especially we're, we're doing interesting meetings now, um, I think it's, maybe, people would be more likely to come to meetings if they knew something.
If they saw, like, yeah.
So speak, I was gonna bring up something to, several people about committees, we have meetings right now, the way we have them, but I'd like to see them, offices, virtual, so someone can, someone can be at home and, you know, be involved with the meeting.
I think we'd get more, um, participation. Yeah, um.
I agree.
Uh, I was, I was sort of worrying, um, as part of our strategic planning, and it, like, we're gonna be here for eight, eight straight hours with everything we have to talk about, but, um, I think it's, it's a matter of figuring out the, the technical capability, which I, you know.
Right, I think, right, I think our taxpayers and residents will really have a lot of trouble, and we got huge community at home.
Um, Kim, at the highway safety committee meeting, um, if, if you, um, if it works out that you can, like, go as a side and have a conversation with him, um, he organizes, um, meeting technology, circuit T V, you know, all that stuff for, um, and then we need to totally, we need to buy, so, um, he has a lot of a, you know, he's, if, he's been advising the board on the cable franchise agreement, because he's very familiar with that, but he could advise, I've already reached out to him to say that, that the board is thinking about this, and that we'd be reaching out with, um, to see if he could provide some suggestions about how we could do that well.
Okay, um, that's, that's great, I like that, um, I think, I think we're tall, I think, you know, we probably get more interested if they did have to be.
I, I worry about it being interactive, like, so is, is someone gonna have a laptop, I mean, questions during the, the agenda portion, I'm not gonna stop the meeting.
No, it would only be if you had to give them at the end, or if they wanted, you know, watch the meeting.
Right.
Right.
It would be an objective meeting.
Right, I agree. Is, is it possible, the, the town has a Facebook site, right?
The person, the, the volunteer who manages the website will put the postings that go out via email also on the Facebook page that only she manages and has posted comments, so it does exist, but it's not something that staff manages.
Could we post, um, put a link to the agenda on there the day before?
We can ask her to do that, I, I don't wanna make promises about what kind of level of service we're gonna get from a volunteer.
Do we need to have somebody else in addition to her, help there, to that process?
It would be actually something to talk about in strategic planning, the idea that really ultimately we should be managing the website in-house entirely.
Agreed.
Um, but that's a staff issue, so it, it's, it's a, it's a, more than a staff issue, it's, it's a tech transfer, you know, it's a, it's a higher level, um, it's a transition to manage.
You know, I'm gonna do that in the future, like, maybe in July, but August, I'll be doing, um, one Monday level of board meeting, but one Monday, which is in the future, maybe, budget, you know, two hours of doing that, because, you know, I have three or four hours.
I, yeah, I, I totally agree with the.
But that's.
Okay, initially, we probably don't have to be about getting the list of.
The list, exactly, yep, yeah, because there's, there's a lot to take on, um, but, anything else?
The only thing I get from board, I make, uh, updates, is we, we did not meet for a recognition, Mike was, uh, he apologized, he was late seven, never sent out the one coming in, uh, having it was updated for, two days before, he just said, I would cancel for June, so we're gonna meet in July, I'd go say the third, Thursday, which I think is, I think the sixteenth, um, it'll be good, it'll be good to meet in person.
Could you let me know what that data is?
I will, I don't have it issued right now, but I will be, I'll be glad to, and it'll be good to meet with everybody in person.
Yep.
Um, and since everything's opened up, I think everybody comes with some ideas, we're coming up and falling and stuff, community stuff, I hope, right, and that's pretty much all I have right now.
Do we have a deadline date on the handbook?
Not at all.
On the web?
I don't, I won't say not at all, but it's more than a year, I mean, I did see, I thought it was twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, I know, that's.
The press calls. It, it's, yeah, yeah, I, I don't know if it's twenty-four or twenty-six, but it's certainly not for this week.
That's all we have.
Okay, um, yeah, the only update I have, I have a, um, budget committee meeting on Wednesday, uh, which is just a, um, organizational meeting, I'm expecting, uh, too much to come out of that, we need a rep for C I P and, um.
Can I ask a question, did you go to, you see everything?
I'm the executive official from the select board to C I P, but from the budget committee.
There'll be a separate discussion.
Suzanne was our.
That's right.
Was, um, and it's a shame to lose her because she was really, really good, um, she wasn't awful. Okay, um, with that, um, I, I would entertain, I guess I've been adjourned by consensus, I, I, I think we get through enough of this agenda.
Thank you.
An hour and fifteen minutes. Alright, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, so you guys want to go? Well, yeah, well, this wasn't as bad as I imagined it would be.
We're doing that most, I don't know, the problem representation is.
Yeah.